I would like to call the September twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four City Council Regular Meeting to order. Will everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will clerk, please, clerk, please call the roll.
Kerry.
Present.
Chilson.
Present.
Hutchings.
Here.
Nelson.
He has requested an excused absence.
Parker.
Yes, I'm here.
Whackler.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Mr. Kerry. Second, please. Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Are there any changes to the Agenda or Consent Agenda? Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I would move to add Lay Down Action Memorandum two thousand and twenty four zero one six, request for an excused absence from, for the September twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four Regular City Council Meeting for Councilmember Nelson to the Agenda and Consent Agenda as New Business Item seven point five.
For a quick correction, I believe it's number eighteen.
Sorry about that.
Oh. Okay. So, New Business Item number eighteen.
Okay. Are there any objections to adding Action Memorandum two thousand and twenty four dash zero one eight to the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Seeing none, it is so ordered. Are there any public comments? Oops. Would the clerk please read the Consent Agenda?
September eleventh, two thousand and twenty four City Council Meeting Minutes, Resolution two thousand and twenty four zero three one, authorizing amendments to the Memorandum of Understanding with Peninsula Memorial Chapel Management Company, Inc., regarding the operation and use of the Soldatna Community Memorial Park, sponsored by the city manager. Action Memorandum two thousand and twenty four zero one five, confirming the City of Soldatna Student Representative Appointment, Campbell Kincaid. Action Memorandum two thousand and twenty four zero one six, request for an excused absence from the October twenty third, two thousand and twenty four Regular City Council Meeting. Whackler. Action Memorandum two thousand and twenty four zero one seven, rescheduling the November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty four Regular Council Meeting to November twentieth, two thousand and twenty four, brought to you by the mayor, and lay down Action Memorandum two thousand and twenty four zero one eight, request for an excused absence from the September twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four Regular City Council Meeting from Mr. Nelson, and that is your Consent Agenda.
Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? Anyone here in the audience wish to comment on any of those items just read? I'll take a look at Zoom, and I see no hands raised in the Zoom. Having no one wishing to speak, the approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda is back before the council. Are there any council objections to approving the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Seeing and hearing none, the Agenda and Consent Agenda are approved. Moving on to the next agenda item is swearing in.
I.
I. I, Campbell Kincaid.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially perform.
And impartially perform.
And discharge my duties.
And discharge my duties.
As Soldatna City Council Student Representative.
As Soldatna City Council Student Representative.
By representing Soldatna High School.
By representing Soldatna High School.
And providing information and viewpoints.
And in providing information and viewpoints.
To the Soldatna City Council.
To the Soldatna City Council.
On city issues.
On city issues.
Affecting the students of Soldatna.
Affecting the students of Soldatna.
Congratulations. The mayor is probably going to invite you to some house seats.
Next item to do is a proclamation I have for the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Okay. Proclamation, whereas domestic violence, once a secret kept among families, is now recognized as a serious crime in the state of Alaska. Whereas domestic violence has severe consequences for survivors, their children, and families, and has long-lasting impacts on their quality of life. Whereas stopping the cycle of violence requires not only resolve and courage of survivors, but also support and involvement from all of us. And whereas enhanced education, prevention, and intervention help increase public awareness of the severity and extent of domestic violence. And whereas domestic violence in the home is a problem that affects every socio-economic level in our society, occurring in wealthy and disadvantaged neighborhoods, and includes the employed and unemployed. Whereas domestic violence is generally learned and passed down from one generation to another. Whereas during the month of October, local, state, and national domestic violence agencies will sponsor events to help us focus public attention on the problem of domestic violence. Now therefore, I, Paul J. Whitney, Mayor of the City of Soldatna, do hereby proclaim October two thousand and twenty four as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Soldatna, and encourage all citizens to dedicate themselves to learning about how to reduce domestic violence, and further encourage everyone to support the domestic violence programs in our community, including the Lee Shore Center in Haven House, dated the twenty-fifth day of September.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I.
It's beautiful.
Someone over there wants to take our picture. Maybe your picture, they don't want mine.
They want yours.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Moving on to the next agenda item is number four, Public Comments and Presentations. Are there any members of the public would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll take a look at Zoom and see if there's any hands raised, and I do not see any. Moving on to the next agenda item is number five, Assembly and Legislative Report. Are there any representatives of the borough or the state in attendance who would like to address the council? And I see Mr. Cox here.
Yes, Tyson Cox, Borough Assembly, Soldatna Seat. We only had one item at our last meeting that was, it was up for introduction, and it's the de-obligation of in-kind services by Cities Akina, Soldatna, and Homer for cash contributions for safe streets and roads. And so I think it was somewhere in the ballpark of twelve thousand dollars that Soldatna ended up paying instead of doing in-kind services. I don't think that will be a problem. I'm only mentioning it because it is a Soldatna issue. What I was really coming to talk about was, on the KPB website, so W W dot K P B dot U S, under the Quick Links, is the Tourism Industry Working Group Application. And I just wanted to make sure everyone's aware that if you know anybody that's interested, there will be three tourism-related industry representatives and four community members. Those are the only voting positions on that working group. And then it also does state, just to be very clear, it states that the cities can all have representatives there that participate. So that means that they can be part of the conversation. It's just they won't actually be voting on what would come to the assembly as any kind of recommendation, that kind of thing. And just as a reminder, what the resolution states is that the Tourism Industry Working Group will meet to discuss tourism benefits and impacts on current borough revenue, costs, and services, discussing potential options or ideas and associated data for ensuring that visitors are paying their fair share of services they use, and assessing the anticipated effects of a potential bed tax. So it's kind of being put in place to look at those things. There is not a set date, as I know right now. The resolution does say, but I think it's towards the end of October, it just says we won't start before that date, so after elections are finished. But it doesn't say that a certain date that it's going to start doesn't have a certain number of times that they're going to meet. And I had wanted to put a little bit more information in there of like, what are they going to discuss? But the mayor, very much as it was his resolution, wanted that to stay very open to the ideas of that group. So hopefully, I'm encouraging people to apply, because the more people we have on there that will ask questions and try and get some information out there, the more we can find out if that is something that we want to put on a ballot, because that's really the only thing that we would be asking is, you would not be asking people if they want the assembly to put forward a bed tax. What you would be asking is, is do you want the assembly to put on the ballot? Do the people want a bed tax in this area? So anyways, if there's any questions.
Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Thank you, Mr. Cox, for coming tonight. So people submit their applications to the mayor's office?
It's, is a form on, so like I said, if you go straight to the KPB website, K P B dot U S, there is, on your phone, it's towards the bottom, on a computer, it's to the right side, but it says, under Quick Links, it has a statement, Quick Links. And then you can click on it, and it says Tourism Industry Working Group Application. You click right there, I looked at it. It's about five questions, maybe six, and then that goes to, I believe, the mayor, because the mayor will be doing the appointing, and then it will come to the assembly for approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Cox? I do have one. And I know it's been said before, but what is the deadline? When do they plan on having a response back to the assembly and the mayor?
It is, I believe it's in the spring. I would have to look at the resolution again, but I think the idea is to have it done this winter before industry professionals go back to tourism jobs. That was part of the complaint this last summer when it came up again. Actually, it's been the complaint every time it's come up to the assembly of whether or not to have a bed tax put on the ballot. The argument has always come from the industry that you always do it during the height of our season. So the idea is to do this working group in the wintertime when they will be able to participate. So I would have to look for the exact date. I'm not even sure if it says it in there. It, the resolution was a little bit vague for my taste, but.
Anything else for Mr. Cox? Thank you.
Yeah.
Have a good day. Moving on to the next agenda item is number six, Public Hearings. Ordinance two thousand and twenty four dash zero three three, repealing Soldatna Municipal Code, Chapter three point one eight, Special Assessments, and Enacting Chapter thirteen point two one, Special Assessments Districts, and introduced by Vice Mayor Parker. May I have a motion to enact? Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I would move to enact Ordinance two thousand and twenty four dash zero three three, repealing Soldatna Municipal Code, Chapter three point one eight, Special Assessments, and enacting Chapter thirteen point two one, Special Assessment Districts.
Have a second, please.
No second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilson. A report from Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mike. The report's going to be brief. This is an ordinance that the city manager and I have been working on. We thought it was going to take a short period of time, but it's taken over nine months now. And I'm going to make a motion here later to postpone after we have the public hearing, so that the city manager, who has spent a considerable amount of time working on it, will be able to talk to it as well. But the ordinance speaks to Chapter three eighteen and enacts a new Chapter thirteen point two one, which thirteen twenty one would retain many of the core elements of the existing, a special assessment code, and introduces more detailed procedure and legal frameworks. It provides stronger guidelines regarding the rules of the city, detailing requirements for petition signatures, and enhanced provision for pavement reassessment, legal enforcement. In addition, as a Home Rule Municipality, Title twenty nine, provides the city with the authority to establish its own process and procedures. And I think through this proposed change and expansion of this part of the code, it will help people who are petitioning for a special assessment district, because there will be the details in terms of the process and procedures. So that's my brief report at this time.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who would, who wish to speak on this item? That's Ordinance two thousand and twenty four dash zero three three. Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on that ordinance? Seeing none, we'll take a look at Zoom, and there are no hands raised there. Having no one wishes to speak, the item is back before the council. Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you again, Mayor Whitney. I would move to postpone Ordinance two thousand and twenty four zero three three to the October ninth, two thousand and twenty four Council Meeting.
May I have a second, please? Thank you, Mr. Kerry. And discussion. Vice Mayor Parker, did you want to say anything more? Okay. Anyone else in the council wishing to say anything? We'll call for the vote.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
And Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance two thousand and twenty four dash zero three three is postponed until the meeting of October the ninth, and that is on a five-zero vote. Moving on to the next agenda item is Ordinance two thousand and twenty four dash zero three four, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by twenty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars in the Equipment Replacement Fund for the purchase of a trackless Sierra snow blower head introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Ms. Hutchings?
I make a motion to enact two thousand and twenty four dash oh three four.
Have a second, please. Thank you, Mr. Kerry. A report from Public Works Director Cornella.
Thank you, Mayor. The Equipment Replacement Fund in the F Y twenty-five annual budget included an allocation for a M T seven trackless vehicle. That's the little mini-me you see on the sidewalks and taking care of brooming sand and snowblowing, in addition to a snow blower attachment for that. Despite Maintenance Manager Sundberg getting fresh quotes prior to the annual budget adoption, by the time we went to order it, that equipment had raised in costs. The appropriation before you would simply provide supplemental funding so that we can get both of those items on order. The manufacturer's working with us, and they would both be received in November in time for snow removal activities, also saving us on shipping by shipping them together. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? That is Ordinance two thousand and twenty four dash zero three four. Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on that? Seeing none, we'll take a look at Zoom, and there are no hands raised there. Having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Kerry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to share that citizens seeing that being used in the town, I've had a couple of people ask whether or not the city would ever rent that out to them to take care of some of their areas around their homes. And so again, I just, I want to forward that on you. It's a neat piece of equipment.
Anyone else? Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. There was a recent article in the Anchorage Daily News about the issues that the city and municipality of Anchorage is having with their equipment and with the upcoming season coming upon us for snow removal. Since they are having issues in Anchorage, just wanted to bring up so that people here, do we, we don't have those same type of issues here in Soldatna, correct?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Through the mayor, we have not had nearly the challenges that Anchorage has and has reported on. Certainly, we've had heavier snowfalls. We have had the personnel and equipment to tackle it in a mostly timely manner. I think our residents recognize that, you know, our turnaround time and how we maintain streets, we were just working with a property owner at the end of Mary Dell on a different subject, and they complimented the snow removal and the streets department. So I do think it's common for us to get, you know, certainly some complaints, but we do actually get a lot of compliments, too. And this will actually be double our inventory of trackless vehicles. We have an older one that we replaced the engine with. Our mechanics do a great job of maintaining our fleet. So now we'll actually have two of these incredible machines, but unfortunately, they're not for rent at this time.
And hopefully, we won't need them this season. But, okay, where were we? Okay. Any other comments? Call for the vote.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kincaid?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Ordinance two thousand and twenty four dash zero three four passed on a five-zero vote. Moving on to the next agenda item, all the new business was on the Consent Agenda. We'll move over to mayor and council comments. And the proclamation has already been taken care of. I, there's a couple of items coming up in the next few weeks. Friday is the christening, not christening, but the grand, I guess, call, opening of the Alaska Christian College Gymnasium that everyone's received an invitation to. And I think we all received an invitation here recently about the grand reopening of Fred Meyer's, which is, I believe it was October twenty-fifth. So I did have someone mention to me that it's going to be a very wet season coming up. And hopefully, he is wrong. He's been known to be wrong before, and hopefully, he will definitely be wrong again. So I have nothing else, and we'll move on to council reports on commissions, on boards and commissions, and there are none.
Airport Commission? Met on the seventeenth? No, but I have a report.
Okay. I didn't see it on here, so, Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you. I wasn't at the meeting, but I had the opportunity to read through the materials and get a report from the airport manager. And there will be two action items on our October ninth meeting dealing with the airport. One will be a lease agreement with the State Division of Forestry. They want to relocate from the Sterling Highway out to Soldatna Airport. And then there is a, the FAA has an off-airport lease agreement that will also be on the agenda. The other one item that was discussed at the meeting, FAA completed their land audit of the airport, and there were a number of minor recommendations, along with a timeline with when, which with we need to complete these items on. And that was discussed at the Airport Commission meeting. So if there are additional details, you can ask our airport manager, acting city manager, or we can discuss it on October ninth. But those will be coming forth. And I think particularly the Division of Forestry relocating out to the airport is a big item that will have a very positive impact.
Any questions for Vice Mayor Parker? I did forget one thing under my comments. Welcome aboard, Ms. Kincaid. Glad to have you here, and it looks to be a good year. Moving on to the next thing. Item is nine, a city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. The written report is in the packet. I will not add much more, take much more time, other than to just briefly note that the Fieldhouse Project continues to be on time and on budget. The side panels and roof panels are going up as we speak. Paving and concrete will continue over the next two weeks as weather allows, and then a lot of interior work all through the winter and spring. So continue to have good progress at the Fieldhouse, and it looks great. If anyone is interested in getting a closer view and getting up close and personal, let me know, and we can get you out there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Seeing none, move on to the next item on the agenda. Public comments, are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item? Anyone here in the audience? Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on any item? Seeing none, I'll take a look at Zoom, and there are no hands raised there. Moving on to council comments. So we'll start out with Ms. Kincaid. We'll put her on the spot right off.
Great. I wasn't sure if I'd be doing public comments. What would you like me to report on with so high?
Okay.
Just to me? Okay.
Ms. Whackler?
I have no comment today. Thank you.
Ms. Hutchings?
Well, I'd like to welcome Campbell. It's a little different. I've had a gentleman sitting next to me for years, so this is good. And I just want to comment on the Harvest Festival. It was really well attended. It was a beautiful day, and I think everybody got their veggies. So that's all.
Mr. Chilson?
No comment, other than just to say, welcome, senior representative Campbell. It's great to have someone in that seat again, so looking forward to working with you this year.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I noticed the last few days absentee voting is available. I sure want to recommend to everyone that they vote. It's one of our rights, and it's an obligation. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker?
And thank you, Mayor Whitney. I, too, would like to welcome Councilmember Kincaid to the Saldana City Council, and we look forward to hearing all the activities at Saldana High School. And with that, I will say, have a great evening.
And I would also like to add to Mr. Carey's comment that October 1st is election day. Please get out there and vote. We have a lot of, a lot of things going on in the borough and the city, and need everyone out to vote. So moving on to the next item, 13, Pending Legislation. Ordinance 2024-032, and that has been postponed until the October 9th, 2024 meeting. Meeting announcements. October 2nd, 2024, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting at 5:30 PM. October 9th, 2024, City Council meeting at 6 PM. And that should be a pretty full agenda with a lot of items on there. Last item on the agenda, seeing nothing else on the agenda, we are adjourned.